Call this meeting to order. We stand for pledge and allegiance.
Pledge and allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, everybody, for coming tonight. Would you please take attendance?
All council members are present, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item three is the approval of the agenda. Entertaining motion to approve the agenda. Please call the roll.
Avery.
Aye.
Doran.
Aye.
Meier.
Aye.
Rassellson.
Aye.
Specker.
Aye.
Tildenburn.
Aye.
Wendell.
Aye.
All right. Open forum. Is there any member of the public who wishes to address the council on an item not listed on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on. Item five is proof of presentation from our economic development partners. And I'm pretty assuming that Tim Reed, our Brookings Economic Development CEO, is going to take it from there.
I don't know.
Not sure how that... Everyone has the right of freedom of thought out there. Kelsey just found it on hers, but it wasn't on ours, so please ignore that.
It was not intended to be on there.
Okay. How do you like that? We'll just go past that. She can't do the presentations.
I was trying to...
Okay. Well, Mr. Mayor and council members, thank you for inviting us to talk about really the economic master plan that the city funded and put together. And we'll be updating you on several of the strategies that are within the master plan. But first, what we want to do, I think most of you have seen this map that we put together here more than a year ago. And what it is, it maps out kind of our roles in the economic ecosystem. Because when it comes to the organizations that you see on the left-hand side, we all have quite a bit to do with economic development within the city of Brookings. And so what you see on there is the swim lanes and the things that we normally do. But what you're going to notice is that there's quite a few overlaps. So what I wanted to kind of add some examples here. Really, it's two basic areas in economic development. And that is, you're either growing business, you're doing business development, but it's also very important to do community development. So that's the two things that we split into. And you can kind of see where some of the organizations are more heavily into community development, some of them more into business development. So, for example, and how this is working, as you've seen that we're talking about the ECO partners. Take a look at existing business development. And as you can see, that's basically helping businesses here in the community make sure that they can grow. And so you'll see that the Research Park is part of that, the BEDC is part of that, and so is the Brookings Area Chamber. And so, for example, one of the goals or one of the strategies that's in the Economic Development Master Plan is to have, and there they call it the CEO Leader Roundtable, we call it Business Leader Roundtable. And to effectively do that, even though the BEDC led the effort and has the tools to work with setting up a roundtable like that, which is really just bringing the business community together to find out, hey, what do you need? You know, what will help you grow? So the BEDC was part of that. And you can see where that existing business development is part, in our big part in the swim lane of the BEDC. But you notice it also was down in the Brookings Area Commerce, Chamber of Commerce, because they have the best connection to those businesses that we want to talk to. And so you'll see a lot of times as we're talking through the items that are in the master plan, there's a lead entity and then there's a partner entity. And so that really shows why we have to, you know, why we have to work together so much. Another good example is on the innovation and entrepreneurship. You can see the Research Park is more heavily active with that area, but they are also looking at proof of concept funds. And that's a part that's also, it's in the Economic Development Master Plan. Now, those, that, they have done quite a bit of other capital raising to help businesses, but the proof of concept fund is something new. It's something that the BEDC has been involved in, and so we're partnering on it. So that's why I just kind of want to show you, that's why we mapped this out, because there are a lot of places where we have to partner, because we all have different assets. And we need to bring those assets to bear to get, you know, work done for the city of Brookings. The best way of looking at this is live in Brookings. And you're going to hear a little bit tonight about the Freedom Works Here project. And really, we're calling it, you know, relocate to Brookings project. We had the opportunity of getting over 6,000 names from the Freedom Works Campaign, the people that want to move to South Dakota. And so we needed to create a marketing plan for them. So they're looking at jobs in Brookings, and they're looking at all we have to, all that we have to offer in Brookings. And so that live in Brookings, as you can see, is across from the BEDC all the way down to Visit Brookings. And even Vision Brookings helps out a lot with some funding on that. And so this is one really good example where the BEDC, the Chamber, and Visit Brookings all had to get together and say, okay, Visit Brookings is who can market the city the best, right? What all do we have in this community to offer? The Chamber, of course, with businesses, they're able to work with the businesses and say, hey, make sure that you are populating the BEDC's job board that they have. And because that's what we're going to point them to. And then the BEDC is then responsible for gathering the data and, you know, kind of coordinating the whole thing, putting it together. We found, because of the way we do it, that we were way ahead of most communities. Most communities didn't have this live in Brookings kind of brand that's been put together. And especially the website that was put together, and the Chamber led on that effort, but we all participated in. So that's what we're, that's what we're really trying to accomplish with having this economic ecosystem. We all know our roles. We work together and bring what we're the best at. And we bring that to bear to get things done for economic development in Brookings. Any questions on that? Okay. So the BEDC update. So one of the strategies that BEDC is responsible for in the Economic Development Master Plan, and you'll see this on all the slides, it'll say the strategy, and we're using, you know, the numbering system for it. So these are the strategies that have been assigned to one of the partners to lead. And this one has been assigned to the BEDC. And this is Build a Business Retention and Expansion Initiative for both emerging and legacy employers. And so just for your information, we actually are very close to hiring a person for this role, because we're going to expand and do a lot more into it into the next year. But the things that we have accomplished is we hosted an ag innovation cluster work group. And so the goal of that is, the ag innovation is something like when you talk about Millboard Seeds and Hudec, you know, the Parmer Prairie Aquatech. Those are ag innovation kind of companies, and we want more of those here. And so we brought together the business leaders and had a meeting with them and said, what do we need to do in Brookings? What are the kind of things that would help you? And, for example, out of that one came that we have issues when it comes to shipping product, especially if you need to go on container wise all the way, you know, up to a foreign port. And so, so OUS kind of sales. And so those are the kind of things that we're talking about. And then we, as the BEDC, will react to those and say, what can we do? We put a plan against, we put a plan forward of how can we improve, you know, shipping in Brookings? So we also, next year, we'll start business retention and expansion visits. So we'll start going through all the employees, and we'll go from large ones, or maybe sitting down with the electronics, or maybe sitting down with the small business and say, what do you need in Brookings to make sure you can grow? And then what I already talked about is the Business Leader Roundtable. It's called the CEO Networking in the Master Plan. And we held that event back in August to help us also identify things that we need to do. What really kicked out of that session was small business resources. And we turned around in just a few weeks and started talking a lot more about what kind of resources can help us or can help small businesses grow? What can be provided by, and this is again the partnership, what can be provided by the Chamber? What can be provided by the BEDC? What can be provided by the Research Park? And so that's Strategy 1.1. Strategy 1.2 is what we'll get started on next year in the plan. It's set to start next year. And this is, we talked about the whole idea of kind of cluster focus, ag innovation being one of them. We are going to put together a business attraction and site selection initiative. So we're going to be out trying to recruit those types of businesses to come into Brookings. So we're not going to be just out there recruiting any business that wants to come. We're going to focus it on businesses that have already been successful here because of the assets we have, like the university. And so we'll be starting that next year. One of the other strategies that's out there is that we need to host the annual Co-Starter or Like Program. Co-Starter, it helps people that are starting to be trying to start a business. It's a program they can go through. We've actually going to do two a year so far. We already did one earlier this year, and then we're doing one here in a few weeks. That's going to be more like a boot camp. Usually it's several years, you have meetings once a week for several weeks. They're actually going to be in a more condensed format here in the fall. Yeah. So that is something that we're working on. Already talked about this strategy. We need to develop and fund a proof of concept fund. We want to have at least a half a million dollars. And the proof of concept is, you've heard of angel funding, or you'll hear of, you know, bigger companies coming in and really starting to put capital into a company. This is way back at the very beginning, just to say, can this be done? Is this business going to work? And so it's the most risky money that you can put in for it. And so it's a very hard place to get funds. People usually want it for their loan before they invest in it. And, but it was identified that it's a very good way of getting businesses started in a community. And so we are, we're actually co-leading that with the Research Park. And we're working with the Enterprise Institute, which is another organization that offices out as a research park. And they, they know how to do angel funds, so we're going to work with them and figure out how best to do the proof of concept funds. The other area that's part of the master plan and that the city has been working with the BEDC on is how can we expand childcare support within the city? Now, we, we had a need study that was completed last year. And then we have completed a feasibility study for remodeling a current facility. And so we were moving along and looking at how can we build this facility within an existing building and try to find, understand how much it's going to cost. Just recently, the state is out, the Governor's Office of Economic Development put forth funds that are available to do planning grants. Through this process, the school system has notified us that they are working on eight classrooms for early childhood education in the two new buildings. And so they are going to be putting that space online and want to stand up a program. So they were looking at these planning funds and say, how best can we, you know, stand up this program? We also have the Boys and Girls Club that's active there. And they're saying now, if you guys are going to do that many, what, you know, eight different classrooms, what does that mean to us? Because they already have programs that are there. Also then, in what happens with the BEDC, we were really focused on zero to three. And through an organization that I've been using with my legislative hat on also to talk about childcare and figure out how we can best improve childcare, it came across that, or they, something they've studied is a lot of times when school systems get involved, it can really be hard to stand up zero to three programs. And so we hit the pause button there, and we're actually going to work with an organization. We're going to get one of these planning grants, and we're going to work with an organization that's going to tell us how best can we do all of that in this community? So we're not, we're not, you know, we're best using all the assets that are out there, classrooms that are available, the space that's available. And then also, how can we best figure it out so we can make sure we can still do the zero to three also? And so we've got just a little bit of a delay for that. But obviously, we don't want to go putting money into a facility and then it really doesn't, it isn't able to have a zero to three program. And so that's something that just kind of came about recently. The idea of it is, when that group is done helping us with this, the final report will really be a blueprint for, so how can we expand access? It's going to have to be some sort of mixed delivery program. And with it can be a parental choice model also, and that's something that we were focusing on at the beginning. So stay tuned for what's going to happen there next. You probably be hearing that we're going to have, if we do get awarded that grant, and how we're going to move forward with this organization that we're working at.
Can we ask questions in between, or you want us to wait till the end? Yeah. You want to take questions after we're gone?
Especially with this one.
As you think about applying for the grant, what does this do to the timeline of when we would have, if we get the grant, when we would have a report or a study completed?
Probably three to six months. Cam.
Maybe, and I understand there's probably things about this we don't know, and I want us to be as efficient as possible. I just want to understand how the planning around what the school district might do is impacting our zero to three focus and how those two could be a conflict and why that pauses our effort.
Sure. So it's really kind of a different way of saying this, but zero to three, so are loss leaders. Usually, if you go into a childcare facility, they'll have quite a mix of the age of children. And the older children cost less to provide for than the younger children.
Okay. So a facility that only focuses on zero to three just doesn't make the budget long-term. You need to have a cash flow.
That's, that's the way it is. We could go on about how that shouldn't be that way. We should be cost-based, but that's a whole nother thing.
Okay. In one of those goals under the childcare and as part of the ARPA fundings, there was talk about building and certifying current daycare, home daycares, and, you know, teaching that group that is actually probably pretty big for the zero to three. Is anything being done with that?
We haven't been able to get that program going yet. We were having a hard time finding a home for it. Trying to find somebody that could manage that well, something that we'll keep working on. But we've been more focused on the facility itself.
Go ahead.
So for the school program, what is the age group that they would be focusing on?
I'm not sure. I don't think I can answer that. I don't know if they necessarily have totally understood what they're going to do either. Because you think those classrooms are going to come online here when schools are done?
Would it be reasonable to say that it would be at least those above the age of three?
Yes.
And likely not in the zero to three age group?
The good thing is, with these three organizations that have come together to talk about it, we're not saying that, you know, the school system has never said we will not do zero to three. Right? So we just got to figure out what's the best way of getting this up and running throughout all three of these organizations.
Do you know when the school system is looking at their program? Are they looking at full days? Or is that just school day? Is it half day?
I don't know that with the school system. I mean, that's kind of all this that has to come together now to understand this. How does it affect everybody else that they want to do?
And to Councilman Wendell's earlier question, you said it'd be about three to six months from the time of receiving the grant. What is the timeline to receive the grant?
We would know, we would, I think we would know by the end of November, if I remember correctly.
And then?
We would have the funds in place in December. And then this organization said they'd have it complete very early in 2024, the one that we're working with that we might be able to use to do the check. Sorry if I answered your question that I was asking. I get the bottom line.
So we get that grant, and then what are we expecting for results on that study then? Are they basically going to tell us how to set up a zero to three then?
They are going to tell us how best to use all the assets we have to make sure that we can do the best job for the community.
Okay.
Can I ask one follow-up?
Go ahead.
I think I remember, and update me if we've already talked about this, that that original ARPA allocation also included a position.
That's what was talked about, yeah, there.
Is that still potentially going to happen when the study is completed? We just put pause on the position?
Just going to pause on everything that we're doing with that to put this figured out. Bottom line is, we've got, we're trying to, everybody's working together to improve the whole situation. And what I do like about it is, when this started coming by, and I spoke to the city manager about him updated with it, and, you know, said, we got to look at this money to make sure we're using it the best way. It's a lot, I mean, we're talking, it's going to be over a billion dollars to do the remodel of that facility. And if there is enough physical capacity elsewhere, let's use those funds in a better way.
Are you going to be here for the other presentations? Because I have a question back on 2.5 strategy. It talks, in the actual document, talks about Community Navigator, which I assume is your Co-Starter. What you refer to as...
Can you see who the lead entity is?
It's BEDC.
Okay.
So it's Strategy 2.5, and it says, you have co-s an annual Co-Starter?
Oh, yes. Okay. Yes. Yes.
So in, within that, the action is to become a partner of Community Navigator?
Community Navigator is a program through Dakota Resources. And through them, with their help, besides having expertise in doing the Co-Starters, we've also had some funding through them.
So is that different than what Visit Brookings is talking about?
Totally different.
But would it make sense if some of those nav people that are participating in Community Navigator also participate in the Visit Brookings part or not at all?
I don't know. They're totally, totally different folks. Yeah. I think Laura will be able to talk about that a little bit more. But all the Community Navigator is really a program for technical assistance and funding to do the Co-Starters program. That's what the Community Navigator is. It was a funding that came through, I think, the EDA, and came through organizations, and they were able to help us. So basically, we're, a lot of us tapped into some funding.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Strategy 6.3. I knew we'd end up spending a little time on childcare, so I was expecting that. Develop a robust communication plan to share successes and wins with policymakers, stakeholders, and the community. And so a couple of things that we've done there. We've started what's called the Park Press, and that's a newsletter that is put out. And the reason it's called the Park Press is because it's more of the organizations that are involved at the Research Park, which is the BEDC, Enterprise Institute, the Small Business Development Center, and the BEDC. And so it's a, it's a way of talking about some of the great things we have going on. The big thing that we're looking forward to do is in 2024, in the second quarter, and it's a partnership, BEDC, I think, I think the Chamber's the lead on this, but a lot of the work has to be done within the BEDC. And that's we're going to have an economic summit, an annual report. And so we're going to invite in, it's basically just an open meeting, and we're going to invite everybody that wants to come in, and we're going to talk about the economy in Brookings. And they're going to talk through a lot of the work that we've, that we've done, and hopefully still get some more feedback from communities on the work that we need to do. And so that will happen in the second quarter of 2024. We'll have a, I think we have a tentative date, but we better be careful putting that out yet until we get a few more things figured out. And that will happen annually over the next five years. And then that, again, was suggested by the Economic Development Master Plan. Questions?
Can you get a question?
I just...
Councilmember Duran?
I just had one quick question on Strategy 1.1. You mentioned that you would have a staff member. Is there a timeline on that staff?
Hopefully, within a couple of weeks, we'll know the person, and within a month or so, we'll have that person onboard.
Thank you.
Okay.
Good job, Tim. Council, thanks for having us. I want to publicly recognize Tim for the work he's done in really pulling all of our entities together. I can say, when he came onboard, he's the one who pushed that ecosystem map and has really been doing a good job of keeping everybody in the loop and has been a true leader and great mentor. So BEDC had a great hire in him, and it's really fun to see what they've got going. So I'm going to focus on the strategies within the Economic Development Master Plan. But feel free, if you have questions on other initiatives that the Chamber has going, I'm more than happy to address any of those as well. Within the master plan, Strategy 2.1, provide Brookings small business with technical training, networking opportunities, and mentorship. This is a true everybody, all hands on deck, because we all have so many different expertise and different audiences. And so while we are technically leading that charge, we're leaning very heavily on Research Park and what they have developing within that with some entrepreneur things. We spent the day, Stephanie led us through an activity where we were able to get all of the resources, state, local, and national for the business community. And we're going to be in another half-day session tomorrow, what that looks like and how we're going to communicate that with the business community. And then provide and participate in networking events. I'm a true believer that it all happens face to face. You can send out as many emails as you want, but the relationship building and the real magic happens when you can rub shoulders with your peers and other business, business community members. And so we have at least three to four per month opportunities for the business community to come together to either learn, celebrate, whatever that looks like. We urge you, if you haven't been to a ribbon cutting in a while, we urge you to attend. I love to see city councilors when they're able to be there to celebrate with those, those new businesses or those that are reaching milestones, things like that. Strategy 3.5, celebrate and promote Brookings entrepreneurial success stories. This is a work in progress, and I don't want to talk too deeply into it because we don't have a firm plan yet. But what I see this as being maybe a monthly spotlight on an entrepreneur, kind of leveraging our partnerships with the radio, potentially the newspaper, doing some different spotlights, getting an entrepreneur out in front of the public and just celebrating that and all that we have here in Brookings. With SDSU being in town, we have more than other communities, and I think that we can do a much better job than we have in the past of raising that up. Strategy 4.1, grow the offerings and impact of young professionals engagement. This is one I'm really excited about. The biggest one top of mind now, because we just had our first class last week, is Leadership Brookings. We just had our largest class since the program's inception in 1991. We have four city staff in that class of 2024. It's been a really well-developed program. We've taken another step in developing that program in contracting out the facilitation so that it just, it truly does elevate it just one, one level above. We have typical satisfaction rating of 91% or higher. We don't just do professional development, leadership development. We get them right in there. We have all of them attend Brookings at SDSU Day at the Capitol. And they receive an education on the way up on the bus from Larry Tiedemann talking about issues in Brookings. And last year, I was on the bus, I was up, went up earlier, but I understand there were people on the bus, like Paul, that when there was an issue that hit local to home, they were able to speak to that. And that, to me, is just awesome. That, those are the interactions, that, that's why I do my job. Ms. Doran was a graduate in 2020, 2021, 2020? So lots of, we've had a lot of, actually, probably in the last three years, at least six individuals graduate and then run, go on to run for some sort of public office. So that's been exciting. And then our Connect Brookings Young Professional Subcommittee. So I'll talk about Connect Brookings as a whole in a bit, but we have a subcommittee there. In the past, we've been doing a monthly social and a monthly lunch and learn. Since COVID, attendance has not bounced back for those events. And so the Chamber's taken the stance of kind of doing fewer things, but doing them much, much better. I've loved that, to be able to be really intentional about every element of every program that we do. So in 2024, we are going to, we are going to have a Young Professional Summit. So instead of having a bunch of lunch and learns, we're going to have one big day where individuals can come and just have a day of learning and networking. It's going to be fantastic. And then also, we're doing peer community research. So we have committee members and myself looking at what other communities are doing well and how they're evolving, because we're not the only ones that are feeling that event attendance crunch, so. 4.6, launch Connect Brookings, connecting SDSU students to internships, mentors, and volunteer opportunities. So this is really Connect Brookings, which was previously known as Connect 2140. We evolved it to Connect Brookings to include SDSU students as well as new residents, which I'll touch on in a bit. But that Connect Brookings Subcommittee is doing some really great things. It's a great tie with the university. We have a Spring 2024 Work Ready Boot Camp being planned, again, trying to avoid the one-off events and instead having them sign up for a series of professional development to get them ready for the workforce. Really excited about that. We're going to have between 15 and 20 individuals participate in the spring. And it will result in, kind of, their graduation will be a mini mentorship opportunity at the annual celebration. I believe that's April 4th next year. We did the Downtown at Sundown SDSU Night, which we have even more ways to expand that next year. The Spring Campus Community Festival, going out into the community festival and talking about all that the community has to offer for them, bringing maps, bringing everything that we have that is off-campus that hopefully they will go explore. And so much more to come. One thing I'm really excited about, we really want to do tours for the freshman orientation classes. I would love to have capacity to get some buses, load up some students, have some really fun locals on the mic, talking about the community, bringing them down all the way to Dakota Nature Park. bringing them down all the way to Dakota Nature Park. We had one student in our SDSU students, it was the New Resident Task Force. He was a graduate student who hadn't been downtown until his senior year of college, which blows my mind. But to get them off-campus and not just that, but educate them on ways that they can get themselves off-campus and get engaged. So super excited about that. 4.9, develop and implement a new resident welcome initiative. This is probably the biggest bulk of our work right now. The website, livinbrookings.org, was created. Our outreach coordinator, Casey, did a fantastic job, along with all of our partners, going through and editing that with a fine-tooth comb. If you haven't been on that site, I very strongly urge you do that and get back to us with recommendations on ways that we can improve that. What else can we have on there, things like that? That website was really, you know, one of the reasons that our community was able to participate in the Freedom Works Here campaign. We had the infrastructure that communities like Sioux Falls and Rapid City and Aberdeen still don't have. So that was really, really great to see. We have a monthly postcard being sent out to all new change-of-address individuals. So we work with a company who grabs addresses from four different databases. We're seeing an average of about 75 a month. We, we understand a lot of those are students because we are a university community, but to me, that's even better. They're seeing how welcoming we are, and they'll stay after graduation. And then Downtown at Sundown New Resident Welcome Night. I want to thank you all for being there that evening. That was really cool to be able to meet new residents and then bring them right over and introduce them to the mayor, city councilors, and to hear those stories was great. And then participation with the Freedom Works Here campaign. Tim touched on that, so I won't go too deep into that. With that, do you have any questions on any of the work we have going?
Councilmember one. I was really encouraged through the Economic Development Master Plan to see the focus on existing businesses. I think that's, feedback we continue to get is how we, you know, encourage existing businesses to grow and how we provide them the resources they need to expand. I'm wondering, as, as you think about BDC being the lead entity on Strategy 1.1 and the Chamber being the lead entity on Strategy 2.1, I think there's echoes in those two in terms of providing resources to existing businesses. How do we ensure we do that as efficiently as possible and that we're not kind of stepping on each other with similar programs or similar communication really being sent to the same groups of people?
So the, all of our entities meet at least monthly. Tim and I speak about all sorts, we probably talk nine times a week. He likes to call me before my coffee. So I think the communication is key there. I'm not at all worried about that. Looking at the way that he, he has hired on Stephanie Mason as their Director of Operations, she's also Director of Operations for Research Park, and the communication that we have, really, I, I think any sort of duplication would be identified. There will be overlap, but don't confuse that with duplication. I, I think we're, we're efficient in the way that we are working through our work plans.
You had mentioned that the Leadership Brookings facilitation has been contracted out. Who has that been contracted out to, and has that changed the program at all?
So Amanda Brunia with In-House Ally, so a local who started out as doing accountant and financial work, but learned her love for leadership development, professional development. So she is facilitating, we're still doing all of the logistics, but she's there that day, you know, introducing, taking, doing closing circle, things like that. It hasn't changed the content so much. We had Cindy Fennig, who was an interim program in special events. She did a fantastic job. We have a, a young outreach coordinator who he's learning from Amanda, and we're confident that he'll be able to lead that program at some point. He self-identified as, I don't think I'm ready for that. Cindy had big shoes to fill. So it hasn't changed the program all that much. I would say there is more of a focus on the actual professional development. Before, we were very focused on more legislative and governmental relations and functions, and that's, that's shifted a little bit to be more leadership-focused.
Councilmember Gurn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have kind of a, a general question that mainly pertains to you, but if other people would like to answer it in the future. A lot of these strategies have a communication component or communication focus, especially with the Chamber. Are you continually monitoring the capacity for staff to take on communication with lots of content creation and making sure all avenues are used and being intentional in communication? Just kind of checking in on your strategy with staff to take that over?
Yeah, that's a great question. So over the last two years, we've kind of trimmed the fat, is what we've been calling it. We have gotten rid of a lot of programming and events to increase capacity, because that was a reason we had so much turnover. One of the reasons was burnout and just constant stress. And so we've decreased the amount of programming and events that we're doing to increase the quality of each one. Also, thank goodness for Upframe Creative. We outsourced our marketing to them last October, and so that has really increased our ability to be more forward-looking and not working in the business and, you know, for the tomorrow meeting, but we're able to look months out. And that's been fantastic.
Okay. With that, I'll leave it to Tim again.
I guess, too, if I may, Councilmember one, I think the reason why we're, why we're doing this so well, what's, you know, to make sure that we're not having duplication, is understanding what we each bring to the table. So anytime I think about we have to have a communication with businesses, you know, it's the Chamber. The Chamber does that the best. Why should we recreate that? And so that's, I think, what, what really helps with this, is it's everybody's realizing, hey, there's a better, better person to do this. They're, they're better at it. Let's not try to duplicate it. So. I'm filling in for Dwayne Chapeau. He is at a Research Park conference, and this is also why so well that we're working together, is to kind of fill in for each other, too, because we have a lot of discussions about these different strategies. He had a slide there to let you know who his, who his Board of Directors are for the Research Park. And if you notice on the bottom, 8-1, 2023, they changed from the Growth Partnership to the Research Park, just to make it a little bit better for people to understand, because it was confusing at times. So we'll move on to some of their goals from the Economic Development Master Plan. And Goal 3 is called Prairie Innovation. And some of the things that they've been working on is, the Research Park's been working on is being the innovative hub. And so we've realized that that's a really a good place for all of the entrepreneurial and innovation activities to happen. And so they, they've been focusing on becoming the innovation hub. The, the VEC, as it's called, the Brookings Innovation Center, that's really a main asset for that. If you, if you need a place to start a business, that's the place you should come. That is our incubator here in Brookings. A lot of times, those are ran by economic development corporations, or the economic development organizations within the community. But here, we realize that the Research Park and its connections with the university, that that's a better place for it. They also are working with SDSU on technology transfer. That's, I mean, the best way of describing technology transfer is Prairie Aquitech, or now called Hubeck. How can you get that, that was two great, that idea from two great professors, you know, to actually turn it all the way into, into a business? And so the Research Park works heavily with SDSU. I've already talked about the, the concept of the proof-of-concept funding, but what Dwayne wanted to show here is they're responsible for even more of that. So we have the proof-of-concept fund. If you do have a concept that works in the business, then you're looking for angel funding. Again, that's a little tougher of a place for people to want to invest, because it's much, much more riskier. But from there, if it survives that, then you're looking for venture capital funding. And then you actually start to go to the open market for commercial funding. And then you're actually, what he said in the main means by capital expenditure is, that's where the, that's where the success is, because they're actually investing back into their, their business then. So some of the tasks that have been going on for the Prairie Innovation, assess current resources for business growth. I think you've heard that talked about quite a bit, that we're really taking a look at what all our resources are, what's the best way of delivering them, because they are spread out between different organizations. Determining what resources are needed then for that, for growth also, that's something else that's being worked on. Taking that data and developing what's new programming that we, that we need to help companies either start up and grow. And really, this all is around what's called Launch Founder, and that's a program that the Research Park has put together to help the launching of new, of new businesses. Part of that is having mentors. They're lining up those that want to start a business with those that have started a business that can help them do it. Founder's Garage is a place where they can land and start with their business. It's, it's like the, you know, an incubator, but it's a smaller space that they can come to and just get started. And then also working through the funding, the funding programs that I did talk through. So if a business is, it has been proved that it can, that it can go, the Research Park will help with the, the funding. So other things that are going on within the Prairie Innovation, Small Business Development Center, most, we are one of the only communities in South Dakota where we have funded a satellite center for the small business development. That's done through Vision Brookings. And so instead of having to go to Sioux Falls or go to Watertown, we have the assets right here for people if they need to, need to work with somebody on growing their business or getting it started. Something new that was just awarded, that's Innovate, Innovate SOVAC, and that's a $750,000 five-year grant that was provided by the EDA. And the idea there is, either for startup businesses or young businesses or even mature businesses, is how do you connect them to the university when they need, when they need help? So if it's someone's got a business idea but needs some research done or needs some engineering done to help them out, we figure out how to make that connection. So this program will be used in Brookings. We'll use it during our BR&amp;E visits. And so if a company comes to us while we're talking to them and says, you know, if I could just do X, you know, I could improve my business, or I'm having this problem, I, I might have to shut down. And so that'll help us connect that. But, but through the Research Park, they're actually pushing that out through the whole state. It's a statewide effort, since SDSU is a statewide organization. And then, of course, the Enterprise Institute that we talked about, they'll assist with the proof-of-concept and angel funding programs. Just what some of the results that have happened with the Research Park over the years that it's been there, it's, it's helped with capital expenditures of $360 million. Those are companies that have come out of there, the money that they've spent in, in the Brookings area. Consumer and business spending outputs, of course, that's taking a look at the economic benefit of what the Research Park does. That is over $225 million. And it's also brought $63 million in wages in, in the Brookings area, and has created directly 640 jobs and 1,152 direct, indirect, or what sometimes is called induced jobs. Questions?
I just wanted, if you could expand a little bit on, like we said, we're leveraging SDSU to help businesses, what that looks like in practice? Like, are they meeting with professors, or how does that actually work out?
Right. And so that's what's good about the, the, the hub, basically, that they're setting up, right? So, and let's just use Brookings as an example. We're out with business, doing business retention and expansion visits, and they come up, someone says, I have this problem. That, now that, when that comes through us, we're able to take that problem and go to one person in the university, and that person will find the resources that are needed within the university. And so right now, if someone's, says, well, I've got, I, I, I need to do something, and you look at that university and there's just so many departments, and, you know, where do I go to, to give assistance? And so that's how it's done, is it's actually going to be a hub that one, not really necessarily just one person, but there's a hub there that we can go to. We don't have to sit here and do several calls to figure out who can help them in the university. And then there's funding to help with, you know, with also doing the work that needs to be done.
Okay. Laura, I think you're up next.
Well, hello, everyone. Appreciate the opportunity to visit with you in this setting. And I, we had the opportunity to visit with some of the, some of you folks earlier this summer. We always want to extend that offer, that opportunity. So if you ever have any questions about what we are, who we are, what we do, and want a little bit more in-depth information, we're happy to sit down with you and, and have discussions over a cup of coffee or a bottle of soda or whatever it is. But we're very excited to be able to talk about Visit Brookings and how we play into the whole process. Oops. There we go. We have two main goal areas that we've focused on. The goal number five is the Anything But Ordinary goal, and under that heading, we are looking at the opportunity to study needs and accommodations in the community, developing that small conference strategy to bring more of those meetings and events into the community, and curate those destination experiences. And I'll get into those in just a little bit. And then the second goal is really the, the storytelling, the telling the Brookings story to our visitors and those that want to come here possibly, just to visit, possibly to stay for the long term. And under those areas, we're, we're growing our branding efforts and also advancing a community champion initiative. So I'll dig into that first one, studying the additional needs and gaps in terms of accommodations, which is Strategy 5.4. What we found is, this one is an opportunity to really do a study, kind of a feasibility study, to help some of those hotel properties that might need some more information to help them make a decision that Brookings needs some additional hotel space. We've found in the last year that some of that is being taken care of itself without our, our efforts, but we always want to make sure that people know that we are ready and able to provide information to developers should they ask us for it. And we can provide things like occupancy rates, take a look at sold-out nights in the community, and also take a look at some of that lost business. And by that, I mean when you take a look at, after a busy sold-out football game, and you see a steady stream of cars traveling south back to Sioux Falls, and you're wondering why we can't capture some of those to stay overnight and enjoy the community for a longer period of time. And sometimes it means some of those lost businesses, conferences that we bid on that won't come to Brookings for one reason or another, and some of that is because we just don't have the right facility for them. Some of it might be because we don't have transportation needs to be able to get them from their hotels to the conference facility to downtown and those kind of things. So we're happy to collect that data and provide it as requested to help our community grow in that area. Digging into the next, whoops, I keep pushing the wrong button. Strategy 5.5 is digging into that small conference strategy. This is really those, identifying and recruiting those smaller conferences that are a good fit for Brookings. One of the things that we're very excited about, and we just launched it about a month ago, is our Bring It To Brookings campaign. And this is just one of the pieces that we're using. We wrapped a bus, and you'll see that with that Bring It To Brookings message for the next year, if not longer. We're also doing billboards, digital, audio. You're probably, hopefully, seeing some messages on your digital display, on your social media. You're going to be seeing some more traditional advertisements. But the whole idea behind this is to remind people that everybody, whether your, your kids are involved in athletics or in your jobs, you are going to conferences or associations or meetings, and you're going to other communities. We want to remind people that those are opportunities, that you can bring those meetings to Brookings. And a good example of that is, we, I believe, in leading by example. So about a month ago at this time, our office attends the Upper Midwest Fall CDB Conference. So it's our counterparts from South Dakota, North Dakota, Minnesota, Iowa, Nebraska, Wisconsin, Illinois, and Missouri. We've been to places like Des Moines. We're going to Rochester. We've been to Champaign, Illinois. And we had an opportunity last year to bid on it. We thought, you know, that this is an opportunity for us to really show that we can host an event like that from the region. We were able to get that conference and bring it here, and people love Brookings, even though we weren't a large community. We still had a lot to offer. So it's just that kind of an example to show that we do have a lot to offer, and we can, our office can help people with funding, with meeting resources, with ideas, all of those kinds of things. So that's the Bring It To Brookings campaign. We're also updating our Visit Brookings Grant Program. We've spent the last year reviewing it to make sure that our, is our review process accurate? Are we really funding those events that really drive that visitation? Are our dollars actually doing a good return on investment for what we're putting into it? So we're, we're always taking a look at that and evaluating it, and we're, we're continuing to evaluate that process, but we're getting closer to the final outcome there. And we're also working in a partner campaign with Dakota Bank Center. If you'll remember, during the RFP process, they put forth a proposal that said they were going to dedicate $3,000 to our office to help in a meeting recruitment strategy. So not wanting to leave money on the table, we have approached them with several different ideas, and we finally got one that stuck. And it's kind of the, where the, our Bring It To Brookings campaign right now from our office is really focused internally on our Brookings residents. We also did a geofence campaign with, with some of the different larger events that we knew would have a collection of different people who are likely to have different meetings that travel from one community to the other. And so we did a digital campaign in conjunction with Dakota Bank Center, reaching out to some of those, and it was a pretty favorable campaign. I can't I can't say that we've converted any of those leads, but we had a really good response with people that responded to that. So we're hoping that that provides an opportunity for us to do more of that kind of partnership in the future. Moving on to the next campaign or strategy, Strategy 5.6, which is talking about curating and promoting destination experiences. We really accomplish this in three different ways. First of all, on our website, we're always adding new itineraries. Our goal is to do three new itineraries every quarter, so a total of 12 new itineraries every year. And we're always looking for different ideas. We were working with Brookings Arts Council one day, and they said, well, we should do an itinerary about what does it look like if we, if someone wanted to spend a day enjoying the arts in Brookings. Boom, there's an itinerary. We had someone call our office one time and said, well, how do I travel with my pet? Boom, there's another itinerary. We just had Parents' Day at SDSU, so we developed an itinerary for how you can enjoy the community during Parents' Day. So we're always looking for those innovative ideas. And in addition to that, we take part in the South Dakota Community Co-op Program, which I've talked about it many times in the past. But this year was a first year that we did a collaboration through that program with an influencer, and we have them writing itineraries for us now. So through that, we're able to forget some of our staff time and still get great content, and we still add our other new itineraries as well. So that's on the itinerary side. We're always updating our blog posts on our website. The Three People You Should Know is an opportunity for us once a quarter to really highlight and elevate those who are working within the tourism industry. Number one, to give them recognition, but also just to remind people that, you know, this hospitality industry, the tourism industry, has a lot of really great potential in growth. So it's a little bit focused on the workforce piece as well, in a very light, soft sell way. But that is another goal, that we do 12 of those a year, so we're always getting out that new information. And we do have a really great opportunity in working with the South Dakota State University PR Writing Class. They write stories for us for our visitor guide. We're going to repurpose a lot of those stories and turn those into blog posts as well. And then we share them out on our social media platforms, so there's always that new content going out, and we get as much mileage out of that content as we can. And then expanded asset inventory, that's really adding new images, new video to our website and to our marketing materials as much as we can. Again, with our influencer program, part of their job is to write these itineraries, but also get unique photos that we can use. Once we have those, we own those photos, so we can use those for other promotions as they come about. The video side, we're always looking at ways to expand our video assets. That is a little bit more expensive proposition, but we have some ideas of how we're going to continue to incorporate that in the coming year or two. Next up is growing our branding efforts, which is Strategy 6.2. We are in, this year is the second year of our South Dakota Community Co-op Program. And just a reminder, that's the one where we put in $40,000. South Dakota Tourism matches that $40,000, which puts $80,000 in marketing out promoting Brookings. And we've seen really great success of that. Next year is our third year of the program. That's really what we have funding for. We're looking at ways of how we can continue to increase and fund that program beyond 2024. And Bridgette and I, Bridgette in our office, which I think many of you know, had some really good opportunities and conversations about that just this morning. So we're looking at continuing that because it's hard to not utilize those resources when it's a dollar-for-dollar match. Continuing to revise our visitor guide, we are in our fourth iteration of our partnership with the SDSU PR Writing Class. And that has been really a fantastic opportunity for us to, am I out of time? Okay, I'm sorry, I felt like I didn't talk enough. Anyway, so we're in the fourth iteration of that. We're annually evaluating our marketing strategies. We put together a marketing plan every year, and again, we're continuing to build our image library. And of course, the Community Champion Program, we're reaching out in two different ways. Our online reputation piece is one that we've been working on throughout the entire year. We want to make sure that our local businesses are on TripAdvisor and on Google, so they're claiming those businesses, so that when people do leave those reviews, they have a place to go. You can't review someone if they haven't claimed their business on those two platforms. And the other part of that is our CTA Program, the Certified Tourism Ambassador Program, which will be the community-wide initiative to really, again, sell Brookings in a way that we haven't done before. It's getting frontline, it's getting realtors, it's getting HR professionals who are doing recruiting, it's getting, hopefully, SDSU on board through the student ambassadors, and pulling everybody together, telling the same story, so that anywhere you go in the community, everyone has energy, private destination, and it's a really great way to build community resources. So we're very excited about that. We're having our focus groups first part of December and build curriculum from there, and then we will roll out the program, I believe, in June of 2024. So with that, as I go over my time, I would be happy to answer questions.
Councilmember Wendell.
Thank you, ma'am.
I know a limiting factor for us as a community in the past in terms of conference hosting was, what I've heard is that oftentimes we got cut off a list because we didn't have a convention center that had a hotel attached. Are you still seeing that in that environment, and that's still a limiting factor for us?
It is. By and large, especially in South Dakota, people want the convenience of staying overnight and then walking right down to the meeting facility. Now, that does, and I don't want to criticize our current facilities because we have Brookings in and they do a nice job, but their space is a little bit limited. And we have Wilbert Square, again, nice facility, nice hotel, but again, very limited space in addition to not having enough room. I think that the downtown project at the Armory will be able to capture some of that. But I, and I will probably say this until you guys are tired of me saying it, but I think that as we take a look at long-term strategy for the growth of tourism in this community, especially if we want to fill up the Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday overnight, which is where we have, where we really have a need. We really need to take a look at that, and that may mean adding a hotel as close as we can to the Dakota Bank Center.
I remember seeing, and I don't expect you to have this at your fingertips right now, but I remember seeing sometime in the last five years, a top 10 cities in South Dakota in terms of revenue generated through small conference hosting. And I think it was surprising that Brookings didn't rank higher on that list, and it was driven by the fact that we didn't have the facility, although we had a lot of other community assets. It limited our ability to generate the revenue we could from conference hosting.
Yep, if you don't have that kind of a situation where you have a conference facility attached to a hotel, you need to provide other solutions. For example, we just missed out on a conference with the South Dakota Times &amp; Townships, because they were fine with the Dakota Bank Center, they liked our hotels, but they wanted to have some form of transportation to get people from the hotels to the conference facility, and that's something else that we need to find a solution to, and I don't know what the answer to that is. But if we can't have the facility, then we need to figure out how we can move people around as a second alternative. But I would agree with what you said earlier about, we have the capacity, we have a great community, we just don't have everything connected in the way it needs to be.
Councilmember.
I just wanted to take a moment to give kudos to your team for things like the blog hosting itineraries. I've been following along online, and I'm finding myself getting excited about places that I've visited on a daily basis. So it's just been a really great campaign to see. And at first, when I started reading the first one that I noticed, I was like, oh, this looks really interesting, what is this place? And then I realized, oh, this is Brookings, this is right here in our neighborhood. So I think that that's just been a really great asset, and appreciate the work going into that.
Good, I'll definitely make sure that the staff hears that as well.
Maybe this is a question for more than just Laura.
Maybe.
But with our sold-out ballgames on those weekends, are we seeing a major uptick in, say, restaurants, bars, revenue from that? Are we seeing hotels having less vacancy?
It's early to tell. When you take a look at occupancy rates, we just got our report today, actually. And our occupancy for September was actually just a little bit down. But again, that was September, and I honestly, off the top of my head, I can't remember how many home games we had in September. A lot of times, it depends on the schedule. And I would definitely say, as we take a look at some of the other indicators, tax revenue, specifically the 3B tax, we are seeing an increase there. When we have talked to different, some of our partners from a hotel perspective, we've specifically asked them if they are seeing more of a demand. The challenge is, we're almost already at maximum capacity for those home weekend games, so you don't really know how many people are not staying there. What you can do is, again, you can see that long line of cars heading south back to Sioux Falls, when I think a lot of those people would stay in town if they could. But they have told us that they've started to see people booking out earlier, and they have longer waiting lists. So if that's any indication.
A lot of, the latest sales tax report shows a negative 2% pillow tax, though I assume we've seen all our GM tech and longer-stay rooms, which don't impact that because of all the products we have going on in the community. And the 3B tax, about a 2% increase when I saw it.
But that was August numbers, right?
August, which is a month and a half late, yeah.
Looking forward to September's numbers.
Councilmember Wendell.
I mean, I won't put you on the spot, on the spot by asking you a yes or no question, but an interest that I have is potentially working with the state to be able to get more targeted information about tax revenue, potentially within a month, if we had week-by-week information, it would, I would assume, help your entity, it would help our entity to understand some of those revenue patterns.
Yeah, yeah. You'd be surprised how many people ask for that specific kind of information, and I don't know, that's probably a better question for Paul, and then maybe a battle for him to fight.
For team, Laura.
I would like to see multiple communities link arms and do that work. I'm just maybe taking advantage of this venue to just say that loud again.
Yeah, I absolutely agree. It would be fantastic to have that level of detail, because we can, the advances in marketing can help us know where people are coming from, how long they're staying, and those kind of things. You'd think that we would be able to be able to figure out a way to figure out taxes in a more specific way. I'm in agreement with that.
I would say beyond that, I know you as Economic Development Partners, us as a city, we've talked about engaging other softwares that are available, but we're talking $20,000 to $30,000 expense, because we don't have that access that you're talking about. Maybe other states do, and so that's unfortunately an expense to a community rather than, hopefully, state government would help us understand that at a first chance.
It would be hard to add four lines to a monthly sales tax return and break it down on a monthly or a weekly basis, and subtotal it, carry the total over and calculate your monthly sales tax.
If only we had someone involved in the legislature that also understands the kind of development. But no, I actually, I think that's a great idea. Kind of an offshoot of one of the things that we're starting to get involved with from a tourism perspective that I think would carry over is, tourism as in general, from an advocacy and legislative perspective, is trying to be a little bit more aggressive in who we are, what we do. I think that would be an excellent opportunity for us as an industry to say, you know what? This is information that we need on an individual basis, that it has far-reaching implications to other industries. So I think that might be something that we could jump on and see if we can get any traction with it.
Could we maybe take the opportunity to ask the state-level elected official in the room? What would it take, yeah, from your perspective, obviously you're one individual, but what would it take to make that happen at the state level?
So it would probably take law change to do it. I think the, in way back when I was in local government, the communities or the states that did allow it, I think there was only one person in the community that could get it at a lower level. Now, to the comment about weekly, they don't, nobody collects data in that fashion for sales tax. I think it's monthly for most anyway, that they do it, reporting periods for it. Because obviously, you don't want to burden companies, you know, they have to do even more paperwork. So it's still at a monthly level. But yeah, it'd take a law change, and there would be a good chance if you did do it, that only the city manager would have access to it at that level, and really would have to kind of roll it up into, close to what you're getting now to talk about. The concern is that you're not giving, if you get to a certain enough level, that you're not giving other businesses the knowledge of what their revenues, you know, their competition revenue is. That's really where the, you know, where the trouble is with it. Privacy of businesses.
All right, thank you. Can we, before we start with Kirsten Justall?
Hello, everyone. Kirsten Justall, Executive Director of Downtown Brookings. So I am the newest one to this group, and so I'm excited to be here and want to say thanks to everybody who's behind me, who have kind of welcomed me to this ecosystem with open arms. They've been really great partners in helping me kind of get up to speed with the new organization. So we are only listed as the lead on one of the points from the Economic Development Master Plan, and so I've kind of taken my presentation slightly different route to give you all an update of what we're doing as a whole with Downtown Brookings, since we are new. We just started in April, as a reminder, so we're still a little baby organization, but have been carrying on quite a bit of work from that the Chamber had been doing previously. So in the last few months, in the last six months or so, we have really kind of landed on the visionary statement that we are the heart of Brookings, that that is what we're really working on, is building a sense of community and sense of belonging in our neighborhood. So as a reminder, we follow the Main Street Americas Four Pillar Program, and so that's promotion, which is building a sense of community. That's really the kind of marketing and events that happen in a downtown. Economic by Talent and Connections, which is building a sense of vitality. I wish there was a different word than vitality to describe that, since it's also the title. But that one is really about having healthy businesses downtown, and that's where we really kind of tie into our economic partners behind us to make sure that we know what services are available and what they offer, and are able to share that good work to all of our downtown businesses, and then focus on what are specific needs that our downtown needs. For example, working on outdoor dining, which is something that is unique to our downtown. Design is the third pillar, which is a sense of place, and what that gets into is things like public art and historic preservation, and just really building a nice atmosphere for people to be in. Then lastly, organization, which is a sense of responsibility, and that's really the volunteers, kind of the money, the behind-the-scenes things to make sure that there's continuity with the organization. And we have a committee set up for each one of these points, and each one of those committees is in or between 5 and 10 people, and a number of people behind me are on those committees, so it's great that they are tapping in in that way. So our goal that we have setting out for 2023, kind of our overarching intention, was really status quo, keeping up with what the Chamber had been doing previously, building our own identity as a Downtown Brookings organization, and just being seen as a legitimate organization, that we are here for the long run and that we are here to do good work. So what we are continuing that the Chamber was doing was quite, Chamber and BDC, we've kind of picked up a few things. So Open Spaces Tour, that's showing off the available spaces, commercial rental spaces in our downtown. Crazy Days, Trick or Treating, which is coming up on the 26th. Holiday Window Decorating Contest, Small Business Saturday, Festival of Legs, and the Urban Canvas Murals. This year, we grew our Fall Festival, rebranded that as the Fall for Downtown, that's only the second year that that's existed. We've added the Brookings Farmers Market to the mix. We are a 501(c)(3), so is the Brookings Farmers Market, and they really needed a hand in kind of some continuity and some backup house year-long assistance. And so we have an MOU with them for 2023 to kind of operate the Brookings Farmers Market, employ the Farmers Market coordinators, and do all that behind-the-scenes work. And so at the end of the year here, we have two Saturdays left. We'll see how that went, how they liked it, and see if they want to officially dissolve their 501(c)(3), or if they want to kind of take it back on their own next year. And feeling will be kind of taking it in as an official Downtown Brookings thing, but that is up for their Board of Directors to decide. We are working on revising, refining our contact list, which is one of the difficulties with downtowns, that there are a lot of businesses downtown 200, 300 plus. It's really hard to put your finger on it, because they are upstairs, down three doors, and inside, and it's one person or 10 people, and so really trying to figure that out, building a web. And so really trying to figure that out, building a website, really upping our social media presence, having a map of our different businesses that are downtown promotional map, really working on our marketing and brand, revamping our cleanup program and then doing some more group meetings. So we have those four different committees that meet monthly as well as a quarterly, just kind of open meeting for any downtown business to come and participate in, as well as two Facebook groups for people to communicate through. And the goals that we had set for 2023 that we hadn't met yet at the time of making this presentation, we're meeting with every business and building owner, which was a pretty tall task you probably wouldn't succeed at, but trying to talk to as many of them as possible. Creating a building and asset inventory of how many buildings we have downtown, what condition they are in. That's something we would still definitely like to do, it just takes a lot of footwork. So haven't been able to do that yet. And then at that point, we haven't gotten any grants for special projects or public art, but since writing this, we've gotten two. So that's pretty exciting. One is $300 and one was $4,000, so that's pretty exciting. So 2023 success measurement. So these were kind of the things we had noted that we were measuring for this year to see if we are successful in what we're doing for cultivating entrepreneurial opportunities, developing, programming and events and working on placemaking. So provide opportunities for consumers to buy local or both to do 26 farmers markets, pop-up opportunities. And we will probably be doing 25. We canceled the whole building market, so we're going to get pretty darned close by the end of the year. Be an active participant and promoter of partnership programs. So how we're tracking that is how many of these community member, community economic development partner meetings that we have attended through the BDC board meeting, our monthly partners meeting. And so by the end of the year, we should be reaching that. Hosting large community events that build a sense of belonging. So those are events, kind of close the street down style of events that get 2,000 plus attendees. Crazy Days and Fall Festival fell into that. And then we will have the Festival of Lights coming up here on December 1st. So we had a lot of people at Crazy Days, which was really fantastic. So that one kind of blew us out of the water. Whole community, community-led workshops to address neighborhood issues. So we held, we're calling them Walk With Us workshops. And so we held one focusing on the walk between the Children's Museum and Downtown Brookings and how to encourage more people to make that walk. It's only a block. People will get in their car and drive downtown. If they can't find parking, they'll leave and go eat somewhere else. So had that workshop. And then we actually have one coming up tomorrow, if anyone wants to join us. It's at 8:30 PM at the White Frame and it's focused on nightlife, safety and enjoyment. So we'll be stepping into the shoes of people who are using our nightlife scene and walking around our neighborhood as if we are them and seeing opportunities there. So please, our doors are open for anyone to attend. And then implementing some of those solutions from there. So we've done one, we've helped with trying to get some of the lighting replaced downtown, but we have a long list of other ideas from the Children's Museum one and are really excited to see what ideas come up tomorrow. The next one was telling the story of downtown by increasing online engagement. If that food bar could like extend as far as we've increased engagement and be like off the side of the screen, that one between the Farmers Market and downtown, social media website has been very popular, which has been great. And lastly, increasing placemaking through public art and creative installations. So we've done three murals this year and then are in the process of a few kind of fun and interesting statues and other banners for light poles. And those are all ongoing projects that likely won't be done by the end of the year, but we have a really good head start on implementing some stuff when the weather gets a little warmer next year. So now on to the actual one strategy that Downtown Brookings is listed as the lead on. And it's established a plan to create and offer adaptable commercial facilities and public spaces in Downtown Brookings. And that is divided up into a few subtasks. So one of them is cultivate leads for pop-up retail. And what we've really been, been able to focus on this year as a new organization is those things that are really pop-ups. So like the Farmers Market vendor events. So for the Farmers Market, we've reached over 65 vendors this year between, we'll have 26 markets if we count. We partnered with SDSU and doing at the Cultural Museum in December. But between all that, we've seen 534 pop-up opportunities for businesses who have come in. And I feel like that number is pretty large, so that's pretty cool. Crazy Days, we had 70 different businesses pop up as well as 15 kid entrepreneurs, which is a partnership program with Stephanie Backdick, reaching out to them, which was pretty great. Our Fall for Downtown, we had 65 pop-ups that were supposed to be there. We had about 40 actually attend because the weather wasn't great. We're going with the Chamber, the Watch Party that's coming up at the end of the month. And we have four businesses that will be doing kind of a pop-up there. And then lastly, that Winter's Farmers Market partnership. So there's usually one in December and one in February, so we'll see how that goes. And then another part of that was the master plan. And that's a big project I've been working closely with Sam on that I'm very excited about. So I kind of have that listed there. So hopefully that all goes through next week with the budget stuff. So putting a plug in for that. Very, very excited to see the outcomes of that and where they're going. So kind of goals, what we're looking forward for next year is just kind of originating, beginning to implement the findings from the master plan as that starts to come out and then really showing value to the community. I think we've been focused very much on involving, in getting kind of involved with our businesses. But I think we need to also be showing value to our larger community and showing why Downtown Brookings matters to our community as a whole. So things that we, specific things we'd be focusing on is considering year-round pop-up opportunities and locations. And what that means to me is we have, I think, an opportunity for a retail incubator space for someone to come and test out a retail store longer term for a few months or a permanent Farmers Market location, which I will continue mentioning forever because I really love a covered permanent Farmers Market location. Growing efforts for placemaking and placekeeping. So that's really upkeeping the placemaking work that we have. And then lastly, engaging all users of downtown. I'm even focusing a lot on the businesses, but there's building owners, there's residents, there's people that work downtown that need to be involved in these conversations as well. Questions?
Councilmember Tolda.
I think as the newest organization and only being online since April, I think a lot of the successes that you have listed here are really fantastic and impressive given the short amount of time that you guys have been organized. My question is, since you are so new, what is maybe one of the top things, top couple of things that your organization would be in order to continue that success into the next year?
Definitely, I think for me it's two things. One, being able to apply, for example, for like grants is really difficult at this point because we don't want to start implementing new placemaking things before we have a plan for the entire neighborhood. We don't want to really advocate for and start planning for a permanent Farmers Market location when the master plan will help us figure out kind of where that should go, maybe what that should look like, how people get served. And so having that master plan is going to be very helpful with the long-term planning for what our organization does. And then two, it's just staffing. I am a 175% time employee and then we have two Farmers Market coordinators, one of which puts in usually about four to six hours a week helping out in the office. So looking ahead at next year, one of the questions you have brought up is just kind of communication and that sort of thing, is looking at hiring someone for communication and events and that being something that they can focus on. So then I can focus on kind of more of that long-range, more visionary type of planning and not putting up every single social media post and making every single poster and that kind of. So I would say that, having a master plan so we have an actual direction and then staffing to be able to make it happen.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you.
Okay, so I have one real quick for the back group. This will be presented to City Council as part of the budget. I believe it's close to 1.8, or 1,188,000, ultimately $2 million. So there's an increase in the outside agency funding for economic development. One of the things I strongly encourage economic development partners here is to provide me with updates monthly. I know there's some to give me weekly updates. You all are doing great things. I share those things with the City Council. And with that type of funding, I would strongly encourage you to send me those updates. I could share those with the council. As partners, they are providing this funding opportunity and it would, we would provide those updates for the council. Well, seeing you guys are doing a lot of great things, so I would be happy with one, make sure the council fully aware of all those opportunities to participate in, like those ribbon cuttings you could do at Tinder.
I guess one more thing, Kelsey. If you want to advertise the event we're going to have on Saturday, give us a little bit of an update of what, how that's all going to play out.
On for the SDSU USP? That is October 28th, so not this Saturday, next Saturday. It'll be from, it started at 11 o'clock. It'll be a 20-foot screen hanging from a big telehandler, watching the big rival game. So we urge you to come out. Game starts at 1:00, we'll have a bags tournament at noon. Cubby, Skinner's and Pints and Courts will be set up outside, serving some food and drinks. George's Pizza, we'll have pizza by the slice. And then Kirsten talked a little bit about the pop-up that we'll have as well. So it's going to be fun, go Jax.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Wendell.
Thank you. I just wanted to make the comment, I want to thank you for the work that you've done and coming together and communicating how you will take the lead in certain strategies related to the Economic Development Master Plan. I think one of the concerns that maybe we've discussed or that I have moving forward is ensuring that the ecosystem can continue to thrive if personalities shift at the helms of your organizations. I think the collaboration that's happening right now is very driven by the personalities that are leading your organization. So I just hope as you, as you're doing your work, you're thinking about, how do we sustain this? If we're not the folks at the table, how can this model live beyond us? Because I think it's complicated, right? Even as you lay out the strategies and who's the lead and how they overlap, I do think there's complications there that could get confused if folks that aren't committed to collaboration suddenly are in your leadership roles. So thank you for the leadership and the collaboration and I hope we can support sustainability in that model.
All right, go on to the next item, discussion on conditional use permits. Mike Struck, our Community Development Director, he's at the side.
Apparently they don't find it in.
We are all interested in what you have to say, Mike.
So we just have a discussion tonight on conditional use. This kind of originated about a year ago. I think we were in the room next door, we had a conditional use permit before a Saturday evening for a use, it's a single use and the only one in the community for asphalt on mixed plan. There's some questions, this is kind of approval process, how a conditional use works, what we should be looking at. So it took us a little bit of time, but we're here to talk about it a little bit tonight. In Brookings, we, our zoning is based upon a Euclidean zoning, so there's a few different kinds. Ours is a little bit more traditional, where we kind of have an hierarchy system. So in our zoning, we have three types of uses, a permitted use, a permitted special use and a conditional use. And so permitted use is, it's a use allowed by right. Within each zoning district, there's certain area density, height, yard requirements. As long as you meet those criteria, you're allowed to do it by right. Permitted special use, same type of format as permitted use, but we list the permitted uses and then there might be one or two specific criteria that they have to meet in addition. And if they meet that, it's allowed by right. And then you have the conditional use. And the definition is there, you can certainly read that. I'm not going to go into all the details in relation to what that exactly is. What I tried to do is kind of break it down a little bit. We have 21 base zoning districts and I think three or four overlay districts. So I went through each individual zoning district and just put them in alphabetical order and then put the conditional use and then listed what zoning district it is. Because as you can see, like especially like major home occupations, they fall within every residential district, so it covers probably, you know, eight to 10 different. What you see on the overhead is just a snippet. So for the conditional uses, then within our ordinance, there's a specific section that talks about the standards for those conditional uses. And so if a conditional use comes up, depending on the zoning district, what are the base criteria they have to meet? And then you go back to that standard later further back in our zoning ordinance. And it's the same regardless of district, it's based upon the use. So here's an example of some of the different conditional use standards. You know, if you wanted to pick one, animal hospital, you should not be located in an area where it could have a negative impact on adjacent properties due to its size, noise or the traffic generated from such use. Garden areas should be designed to have minimal impact on the surrounding residential properties. They would have to meet kind of the basic requirements plus these conditional use standards in order to get approval. The approval process, they submit an application with the site plan, goes through review by staff. Then we put it on a planning commission agenda where there's public hearing at planning commission level. And then they provide the recommendation. And recommendation comes to the City Council. Conditional uses are approved by ordinance, so there's a first and second reading. Public hearings have the second reading. You do have the ability with the conditional use to place additional requirements on that use if you so choose. Just the main thing is, is with those additional standards, you know, are they reasonable? Do they provide a public benefit and are they obtainable or achievable? Some of the ones that you typically would see is like hours of operation, there might be a noise, screening, access provisions. So like on the access, some of our conditional uses for like more community gathering spaces like schools, churches, things like that, it's a requirement that they have to be located on an arterial or collector street because they generate pretty significant volumes of traffic. We don't necessarily want to be pushing that traffic into our local streets and residential neighborhoods. We want to make sure that the streets serving that area have functional capacity to handle that decreased demand in a short period of time. Another thing I like to talk about when, you know, if there are some additional criteria that you'd have interest in is, are those requirements similar to what you would require for other comparable uses? And so it kind of comes back to the reasonable side of things. Can this, is it reasonable to expect somebody to, you know, color their facility or something that's purple? Maybe in Vikings country, but is that reasonable condition to put on the requirement? So that's kind of where it's like, you know, is it something that would be very comparable to what another business would be required to do? And if so, then that's a reasonable condition to place on it. So it'd be above and beyond what's listed in our criteria. So what happens when change occurs? There's basically three ways to handle a conditional use. Certainly have the ability to revoke a conditional use. That's if the applicant is out of compliance, something that they have control of. And so if they are not meeting these standards for the conditional use at the time of approval, there's certainly that ability to revoke it. You'd have to go through a public hearing process and provide due notice. The renewal process, this could be if they're looking at adding a new use and potential expansion of their existing use. And it kind of depends on what criteria are put at the time that the original conditional use was put. Sometimes we've seen where there may be a timeframe associated with the conditional use. Sometimes some of our conditional uses are more related to home occupations where they're specific to that owner only. So if the house were to be sold and a new owner comes in and wants to do a similar type business, we make them go through the same process. And then the last one is the non-conforming. This is one that most non-zoning technical geeks refer to as grandfathered, but as zoning nerds, it's, the technical term is non-conforming. So when a property is non-conforming, that's through no fault of the applicant themselves. Cities, we like to change our ordinances over time. And so when we make those changes, sometimes we put properties into a non-conforming status. They are allowed by right a 25% expansion. If they're greater than that 25%, then they would have to go back and reapply for a new. Um, if they're greater than that twenty-five percent, uh, then they would have to go back and reapply for, uh, a new conditional use. So a non-conforming, you could fall into a non-conforming status through no fault or changes that they've made as a business operation, but us as a community have maybe changed the standards or changed our ordinance, and then that just puts them into that non-conforming status. We don't penalize them because it was nothing of their doing, but they can continue to exist as they currently do. If they want to expand, um, they're allowed a twenty-five percent expansion of like, for facility-wise, wherever they're building footprint. Uh, I went back and, and kinda found, yes.
I have a question on that non-conforming. So these have to go up for renewal every so many years?
They, they don't have to.
They don't?
No.
Okay.
Um, I would say the city of Brookings typically has not put time restrictions on this. Um, we, we just, uh, dealt with one at the last, uh, joint board of adjustment meeting with, uh, between the city and county. It was a dog kennel, and they had a conditional use permit, and when they originally approved it, it was for three years. And then, um, they came back for renewal, and then they, they.
Permanent, though.
Yeah, it's permanent now. Sometimes they'll do that, um, with, uh, a business, uh, maybe new to the community, uh, just to make sure that, uh, if they feel like there's a potential controversy associated with it, to give them quote-unquote "a trial run," and to kinda prove themselves as a business, and making sure that they're following through with all the conditions, they're being a good, um, business, um, owner, taking responsibility for things. And so in that particular example, uh, they've been in operation for three years. Um, the county staff did some site visits, they added security measures in place, hadn't received any complaints. Um, and so they felt moving forward, um, they didn't feel it was appropriate to put that time restriction on it, so. Uh, I did some, uh, history, kinda going back to January of oh-nine, simply because that's when I started here. Um, during the last fifteen years, we had fifty-two conditional use requests, forty-six have been approved, so an eighty-eight percent approval. Our most common conditional use is home occupation, there's fourteen of them. Of those fourteen, I, I, I did write down the specific ones, but I feel like, um, probably close to half of them were probably the single-chair-in-home hair salons. Um, the next most common ones, and they each had three, was contractor shops, outdoor storage, and outdoor sales. Those are the, the next three mo-, um, condi- most common conditional uses. I believe in, um, twenty, twenty-three, I think we've had one, and it was for home occupation, the hair salon. As I was kinda putting together some of the information on this, um, we need to probably, um, make some changes to some of our conditional uses, um, some of the standards, uh, even reevaluating our home occupations. Uh, we probably haven't done as good a job of keeping up with trends, and especially as COVID hit, um, we used to have a lot of, uh, home businesses that were primarily required to go through this process because of the home deliveries. I think online shopping has changed that to where you can't tell if it's somebody personal shopping or if it, you're getting a delivery. Um, and I even know there's sometimes with some of the, uh, youth organizations, they put together orders and they have them shipped to one or two individuals, and you'd never know if they were running a business or if they're receiving the shipment, and if they disperse out to all the, you know, members of their organization. So I think we need to take another look at that. Um, even just the work from home in the offices, uh, and we, we're guilty of it, city employees have the ability to work from home, and so should we get a minor home occupation permit for, for that at our office? So it's, I think we need to take a, a good look at it and, and probably come forward with some suggested changes in the future. You know, I looked to try and see if there's like any best practices, um, for conditional uses and, you know, spent a lot of time surfing, um, the web for, you know, some of the different, uh, organizations that we belong to, as well as just looking at other communities. Would say, I, I don't think there's really any best practices out there. I think the standards that each community uses, it's based upon kinda the, um, interests or the issues that that particular community is faced with. And so I, you know, I can't say if there's just one specific, um, best practice for this type of use or not. I think it all depends on the locality. Um, I think in the other part of the discussion is, there's a question about what other entities would be involved in the approval process. Uh, conditional uses, they're a local, um, issue, that is, the decision's made locally. Um, yeah, there's some uses that, uh, they may have to be required to get some permits through a state or federal agency, but, uh, for the most part, we try to keep that out of our zoning ordinance, um, simply because, you know, it's, it's similar to, why, I guess for example is, one of the things I found when I was looking through the conditional uses, I think for a brew pub, it's, we do have something in there that says they have to obtain, you know, the appropriate, uh, alcohol licensing from, through the state. And I think that's just kind of a given, that if you wanna have alcohol in South Dakota, you have to go through the appropriate licensing process through the city and the state. So should that rather be part of our conditional use process? Um, probably not. I mean, it's a, it's another license process that they have to follow through the city anyways, so not necessarily sure it should be part of our conditional use, so, but those are a couple of examples, and. Questions?
Councilmember Wendell.
Thank you, Mary. Uh, I had a question of the, uh, from the approval process slide on slide six, where you talked about the layers that an applicant would go through, the application process, the planning commission, and then ultimately to the council. And that the planning commission would also have an opportunity to require some additional requirements. Have you found in your experience that if additional requirements get tacked on through the process, is that occurring at the planning commission level, or is that often happening at the council level? Have you seen any shifts in, in that overtime? Maybe I'll give some context to Rob White asking that question. There's, there have been occasions where I'll look back at like the minutes of a planning commission, and I'll see that they've had conversation around questions or concerns they had, but maybe they didn't take any action to change it. And I get the sense that they're thinking, well, there's one more hurdle to get over, and that would be the council.
I would say that sometimes when they're maybe not quite sure whether they want to put that on, they will discuss it, and they're like, well, we just, we're just a body that provides a recommendation. Um, and so they made me feel like, if they send that for, that recommendation, then the council may feel like they have to take that recommendation, and then they made it a little uncertain of whether or not it's truly appropriate or not to put that condition on. And so they're like, we've discussed it, um, the minutes move on to the city council, and we'll let the city council make that tough decision, sure.
Mike, do you recall any conditional use ones where we actually put additional requirements on it? I don't, I don't recall, but I know that we have, but I don't recall what they were.
I think some of the ones that are probably, that we have is we restricted them for the home occupations to maybe that homeowner only. Um, we have limited some hours of operation for home occupations, where we had, I think, we had some that had like, wanted to do like a woodworking shop, and so we tried to limit the, the hours so that, uh, you know, just so they don't have to disturb, too much of a disturbance from a noise perspective. Uh, we've also limited them that they can't do outdoor displays. I think there was one that was making, um, furniture, and we wouldn't allow them to, uh, display the materials in the yard and things like that. Um. Usually it's, it's hours of operation is probably the biggest one, because, and it's really associated with the home occupations, because, um, making sure that they're not going, um, you know, too much into the evening hours, so they don't, they're not a disturbance to the residential feel of that neighborhood. That's probably the biggest one.
Councilmember Tobin.
Um, yeah, I have a couple of questions. Um, so, uh, when you talk about the ability to put on additional requirements, um, you made a comment that, um, we as a Brookings council haven't really had much of a history in terms of creating any, um, sunset on, on the, the permit or, um, indicating a time when that permit would again be reviewed. Is that something we have the ability to do?
Yes.
Um, and then something that you just mentioned is, um, we've limited some of the home, um, uh, approvals to the current owner of that business. Do we tend to do that with other conditional use permits that maybe aren't just home usage?
We don't, no.
But we would have the ability to do so?
Certainly could. I think one of the things that we've, I, I would say early on, um, we were putting some of those conditions on more recently, we've been shying away from that. And I think the thought process and the reasoning behind that is, if it's appropriate to issue a conditional use, for example, in, in home, one-chair hair salon for this individual, why would it not be appropriate for the next individual in that same location? Because all the criteria are being met, and what we're trying to do is prevent you from, and I'm not saying it would happen or anything, but to get in a situation where you're proven it for one, but the next individual eats all the same criteria, but maybe doesn't get approved, and it puts you in a difficult position when you said, well, it's appropriate for this one, but why is it not appropriate for this one? I've seen it in other communities and in other areas of the state with the conditional use, where unfortunately, um, it, it becomes as, one gets approved because nobody shows up to the public hearing, next one shows up and two people speak out against it, and it's denied, um, for the same location.
I, I can definitely see that reasoning when it comes to things like a single-chair hair salon. Um, the, the conditional use permits that I think, um, maybe concern me a little bit more are those like asphalt, uh, companies that are located within our city. Um, and I do think there is certainly something to be said for the trust that the city has with certain business, uh, running a certain type of business within city limits. But if that ownership were to transfer to a different business, that same level of trust or the same level of perhaps just expectation of how they operate may not be the same from one business owner to another. So that's more, I think, where I am, I'm kind of thinking and why I ask that question. Um, another question that I had was on, you, you talked about the ability for non-conforming, uh, those that are kind of grandfathered in to have twenty-five percent expansion. Does that twenty-five percent expansion apply to all conditional use permits? So for those that, that we granted conditional use permit, like say a, a chair, a single-chair, maybe that's a bad example, because I don't, you know, twenty-five percent of the chair, but, uh, maybe a woodworking shop instead. Um, if we grant that conditional use permit to a, a business rather than being grandfathered in, are they able to then expand twenty-five percent under that same, or maybe more, uh, under that same permit?
Um, let's see if we can find a good example of a use up there that we could apply this to, um.
Orla district, maybe, Mike?
Well, uh, all right, concrete plant, that's a bad example.
Contractor shop and storage.
Yeah, contractor shop and storage yard would be appropriate. Typically with the non-conforming, it would apply to the structure. So if they wanted to do, you know, they, they built their, their shop, um, business is good, they need to expand it, but somewhere along the line, a change in the zoning ordinance was made where, uh, maybe the lot area requirement increased, or a setback changed, um, and they can't meet that, they would still be allowed like a twenty-five percent expansion, it's a one-time expansion.
I think maybe more what I'm, what I'm getting at is, if we were to get, to grant a conditional use permit to, um, a storage facility, um, so we granted it as a conditional use permit, we did not then change the, the boundaries or the rules of that, that zone, um, but business was still doing good and they wanted to expand that twenty-five percent. Does that only to apply, only apply to when the use of that, of that zone changes? Or could they then grow twenty-five percent because we've already granted that permit?
Okay, so let's, in that example, um, they have room to expand, they're, they meet all the requirements of the zoning ordinance, the conditional use was approved, um, and, and they meet all the criteria that conditional use, and they wanna expand. As long as they can continue to meet the criteria that was approved as part of the conditional use, they don't need a variance or anything like that, they would be allowed to do the expansion.
So they could potentially even go up to like a fifty percent, a hundred percent expansion, as long as they fall within those same parameters?
The twenty-five percent only applies if it's a non-conforming use. If they can meet all of the requirements of the zoning ordinance, um, as well as the standards that were approved as part of the conditional use, they would be allowed to have that expansion.
Um, I think where individuals tend to see a lot more of these conditional use permits actually doesn't always land within the city, but more so within the county. I think they, um, and, and not just Brookings County, but any county tends to see a lot more requests for conditional use permits. So I'm wondering if, what, what happens if a conditional use permit is granted in the three-mile joint jurisdiction area? And then if the city were to annex that land, what does, what happens then? Is, is, does that just then become a non-conforming use and then be allowed to grow that twenty-five percent? Or what does that look like?
Um, that's a good question. So it depends, uh, there, there's two scenarios we could run here. One is if it's a conditional use that's approved in an A district, um, that goes before the joint board of adjustment, which is, consists of three county reps and two city reps. And over time, city grows out, annexes that area, it still comes, when it, when property is annexed in, it comes in with an A status. If that use is not allowed, um, within the city of Brookings zoning ordinance and the A use, then it'd become a non-conforming use. And so then the non-conforming, uh, provisions would apply with the twenty-five percent expansion, uh, limitation. Um, they would always have the ability to seek a rezoning, to bring it into conformity with the appropriate zoning district. The second option is if it's zoned anything other than A, then it would follow our city zoning regulations and go through our conditional use process, and we would have the ability to approve that, like, you know, if, even if it was just inside city limits. So hopefully, at that point in time, when the city grows out and annexes, um, it would still be compliant with our existing zoning.
My last question is, one of your slides mentioned, uh, when change occurs. What, what, uh, what is defined as change? What triggers those types of things?
Uh, it could be a couple of examples that you talked about, um, you know, if you have, uh, an existing business, business is good, they wanna expand, uh, does it meet the zoning ordinance? Does it meet all of the, uh, standards, setbacks, lot area, height requirements, density requirements? And then, uh, if it's an existing conditional use, does, can it still meet the requirements of a conditional use? Um, if they can, then, yeah, they can do the expansion. If it doesn't, uh, there's a couple of ways they could do is they could reapply for a new conditional use, they could try and seek a variance. Um, there's the non-conforming route, where they could potentially be, uh, and that would be a case where, you know, somewhere along the line, the city changed the rules on them, you know, through an ordinance amendment, and it wasn't any fault of their own or any doing of their own, and so we don't penalize them, but we do restrict, um, you know, what they could do from an expansion perspective. Sometimes it might be as, uh, they get a conditional use for one use and decide that there's a business opportunity to diversify and do something else, and may trigger the need to get a conditional use to establish a different use, because we do allow multiple buildings on the same piece of, on the same parcel of property if they have enough space.
And, and so basically they'd come back before the council, only if it was a need to apply for a new permit, apply for a building permit, not necessarily if, again, like, the owner of the business changed or, um.
Correct, unless that was one of the provisions on the original conditional use where it's restricted to, um, this, this business only, or this ownership interest, um, then, then if there's a, a sale where they wanted to, new owners come in and they'd have to do a renewal of it. where they wanted to, new owners come in and they'd have to do a renewal of the conditional use.
Hey, Paul's got a couple of questions.
I want to get back to the joint board of adjustment here in a minute, but first, I would like to hear council's perspective on the assurance that staff is communicating to you as well as considering and communicating to the planning commission on those very large conditional use permits that maybe impact the neighborhood, the community, that we're considering the impact to the environment as well as equity as well. I would like to hear from you as a council, if that is a priority for me. Because as Mike said, every community is unique on the parameters which you can put on the conditional use permit. We really haven't put too much in there, but I want to make sure that as we have those large conditional use permits come forward, I don't have them off the top of my head. I know asphalt was the one that started this whole conversation. There are other type like uses that could impact the environment, could impact certain neighborhoods and people. I want to make sure that we are on the same page, that council would support us as staff looking at those opportunities to protect not only the environment, but people as well. And then to share that with the planning commission.
I, I would certainly be supportive of parameters that would allow us to have a better understanding and maybe better oversight of the, of those types of permits that would have significant implications to the, the feel of a, of a area of a community, the, the place, that, you know, if it's going to have a significant impact on, on a residential community or something to that effect, and then also those that would have significant environmental impacts. And I think also just understanding that we do have the ability to perhaps put in place parameters where we would have the ability to revisit. I think right now, a lot of times when we are granting conditional use permits, once they're granted, they are kind of there. And, and I think if we really are looking at things like, like our planned districts and, and what our plans are for different areas and communities and growth of Brookings, I think we should be mindful of maybe revisiting some of those. That doesn't mean that it wouldn't be granted then at the time of, of revisiting, but I think it would depend on, on what the permit is and what the nature of the business is in terms of what that, what that trigger might be to revisit, but I would certainly be in favor of considering those parameters with each of these conditional use permits rather than just granting them and, and providing it as a granted permit in, or for, for duty.
I, I'm kind of open to that concept relative to conditional use permits and kind of generally this approach where we, you know, at the strategic planning retreat or when we get an opportunity to take a deeper dive in restructuring the way we consider sustainability and equity across neighborhoods and for all residents when we make certain decisions related to zoning or economic development or whatever, community services, rate increases, whatever that looks like, if there's ways to articulate that more clearly. It seems like that has bubble belt kind of in pockets, but we don't really have clear direction on what our stance on some of that is. And this feels like one of those areas that would be a great example of how we do that.
It's not conditional uses, but we've had a couple of fairly major land use changes that came to us in the form of resolution rather than a, an ordinance change. So we really didn't have a lot of time to, to think about it. And even the, when we were going over some of those things that our committee was going over, there was some language in there that seemed to say that if it was a, a land use change or something, that it should be in, in the form of an ordinance. So I'd, I'd like to maybe look at that a little more. And a couple of those kind of took us by surprise, I think, that, oh, this is a resolution. We have to say yes or no right now and, and I hadn't even seen it before.
So that, that is the only thing we do by resolution is annexations. That's state law. All those zoning changes, all those rezonings are done by ordinance, but annexations are done by resolution.
And that's, that's just the way it is?
Yeah.
Now, what was the one that, when we looked at the property that was off of Twentieth Street, but it was a land, a map changer or some?
Oh, okay. You're thinking of, okay, I'm sorry. You're talking about comprehensive plan, map amendments. Yeah, and those are done by resolution too.
Good.
I think that's also in state.
Those are the two instances.
Yeah, yeah, all right. Yeah, so future land use map amendments. And those are really, the future land use map is really the guiding, the guideline, the policy to have in place to support your rezoning request, which are done by ordinance.
So maybe Mike, if you'd look into that, would provide a little information and a report to the council on the state law that provides that guidance on the zoning. The other question I had, going back to joint board of adjustment and conditional use permits, Wayne, you, you probably know more about this than Mike. Most recently, there was a conditional use permit requested in that area within the water or what it was called, water wellhead protection zone. And it was approved through a conditional use permit. Mike, can you help me understand, maybe council and the public understand, what does that process look like? Because what I understand is our staff really doesn't drive the language, the process on that. It's a five-person board, two of the people are up to the city, three by the county. My concern there is that, much like we're talking about environmental impacting a conditional use permits, could there be placed requirements, requests that that conditional use permit be visited annually to ensure there's no environmentally impacting causes to that, specifically that, that area, wellhead protection area? Like, can that come from the city or does it have to be driven from the county? A lot, a lot in there, sorry.
All right. So with the conditional uses that fall within our joint jurisdiction area that are on egg zoned property, all of those are administered by Brookings County Development Staff. They, they accept the applications, they work with the applicant, they prepare the staff reports, they go do the site visits. And then the zoning regulations and the joint jurisdiction zoning ordinance are applied to those specific uses. So with conditional use in the joint jurisdiction area that's on egg zoned land, it's done by resolution, the board of adjustment. And that's, the voting threshold is just a majority vote. That's something that's been a change in state law. And it's, it, it's essentially a motion, resolution is kind of how they do it. Every jurisdiction has a little bit different ability of, of the approval process. City of Brookings does it by ordinance, they do it by emotion or resolution. As far as putting a time or restriction on it, you certainly have those abilities as long as, you know, it's kind of justifiable. If you can really, you know, save the public benefit to having that additional requirement on. The one challenge that you can run into with that sometimes is pretty difficult for somebody to make a significant investment to know that that conditional use is only good for one year. And then it comes back and could be a change of the board membership and they revoke it. It's like, well, now it becomes a takings. You know, that example that came up on the accessory use was certainly something that maybe needs to be revisited as far as what should the standards be? Should there be restrictions on the size in that particular zoning, or it was Zone A of the water protection overlay district? The challenge is, is we still have to remember it's egg zoned property, there's egg uses out there. How do you put a size requirement on a farm that happens to be located in that area that wants to build an outbuilding versus somebody that has an acreage versus somebody that has a hobby farm? It's challenging. And so sometimes you have to look at is what is reasonable. I think there were suggestions in that particular instance is do you do want monitoring wells that are downstream from the location of this structure, but still on the applicant's property? And, you know, it was discussed and at the staffing levels, I guess it was discussed and with some of our partners and there was an interest by our partners to monitor those.
Staff, just to answer the question, staff could make a recommendation. For example, I know that one particular one, the understanding was that all the equipment would be placed inside, it was an automotive type industry, that if, for example, vehicles were starting to be stored outside with chemicals, what have you, that that conditional use permit could be revisited. Something like that could have been placed on the conditional use permit?
Well, that, there was some confusion on that because it was, it's an accessory building on an acreage for a residential structure. It's not associated with an automobile business. There was assumptions being made that they were going to do automobile because the applicant happened to own that type of business in another community. He wouldn't be able, be allowed to establish that use on the property because it's not zoned appropriately. So it was primarily to store some of toys that they'd accumulated, like campers, boats, snowmobiles. And then they had a couple of vehicles that are already parked outside that they could pull inside if they wanted to. If they were to try and establish their automobile use there, that would require a different approval process they'd have to come back for. But, you know, in a nutshell, yeah, there's always concerns every time you establish a use in a sensitive area, you know, if we're dealing with our drinking water supply. The requirements for that is they had to have a concrete floor, they would have to have a holding tank system so that they could use a, a traditional septic system where they could, the fluids could leak out and such. And so it, there was opportunities that they could have added additional criteria on, but there didn't seem to be support from some of our partners in this and so they weren't brought forward.
And in that particular example, does both the city and the county staff have the opportunity to bring forward a recommendation for the conditional use?
It's, it's administered through the county.
Strictly by county, even though city representation is on that board?
Yes. So they are, the way the ordinance is set up, that is, anything zoned egg, the county handles, anything other than egg is handled by the city and it follows the city's actual zoning ordinance with the expectation that at some time in the future, it would be annexed and so we want it built to urban standards. So we administer not only our zoning, but then we also administer our building code on those properties. If it's zoned egg, it, it's handled through the county, but it's through the joint jurisdiction zoning ordinance, not the Brookings County ordinance.
And that's true, even in a wellhead protection area.
Correct. For egg zoned properties.
In that particular deal, BMU was there and, and made their case and they had written a letter to everybody too outlining the danger, you know, the concerns about the wellhead protection area. So the, the city's points of view were well represented, just, they just didn't, you know, and it was a, you get five people and I happened to be a chair member of that meeting that night.
I think there was also some misconception that you can just automatically deny a conditional use. And in that particular case, for accessory structures in, in the wellhead protection area, there was like seven conditional use standards that had to be met and they met all seven of them. And you could still place additional requirements on there that, you know, would be applicable to the situation, but there was some individuals that they just felt like it's a conditional use, we can just deny it. And it's like, well, what are your reasons for denying it? Because they meet all the standards that have been approved by the governing bodies that said it's appropriate for this use in this location. So you really have to have a pretty strong argument and defensible argument to deny a conditional use when they meet all seven of the standards for a conditional use.
But, but there's certainly grounds to deny it. I mean, a, a, a voting body does not have to feel compelled to approve a conditional use permit in, in those situations if there's reason to deny it.
If they meet all seven criteria, you're pretty much committed to approving that.
Well, I would, I would say you have to act, you know, you have to decide in a reasonable matter, manner, considering the evidence. And the, the caveat is that, you know, a, a board evaluating that can't act arbitrarily or capriciously, which would be the South Dakota legal standard for, for inappropriate decision-making, which means you have to consider the evidence and weigh it against the requirements and determine. And then you do have discretionary authority to evaluate conditional use criteria and the facts that are presented and make your decision. But you have to avoid ignoring evidence or acting in an arbitrary manner, such as by closing, you know, closing the door on, on the applicant's request just arbitrarily. So you have to be open to the evidence and apply the criteria correctly. And if there's non-compliance, there are remedies, legal remedies to, to obviously, the fact that they've been granted the conditional use does not mean that there are not remedies to ensure continued compliance with the requirements.
Any questions, comments, anyone? Thank you, Mike. Okay, we'll move on to next week's meeting with best agenda. This is your student's report, assistant to the city manager is going to do a presentation on the solar farm project.
I have people coming for that.
Okay. And we, currently we don't have contracts or change orders. Got one first reading on budget ordinance. Second hearing on budget number eight for project three. And then other business, we got snow operations plan, both the police union and general city union agreements, city progress report, assistant to the city manager. And if anybody's got any other topics they'd like to bring up, entertain a motion to adjourn. All those in favor?